Can I have a motion to go back into executive, uh, public session?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Host. Um, good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one. Can we please stand for Pledge of Allegiance followed by moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones? Especially the Sister of Frank Gunti and the Mother of Lynn Concepcion and the Mother-in-law of Amy Palmieri. Our pledge allegiance. Of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, we're gonna start with a public comment event, did anybody put anything in for public comment on agenda-related items?
No, I did not receive any.
Okay, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, Ron.
Good evening, everyone, it's great to see everyone. My update has a couple of components to it. The first is just a general school reopening update and then the second is with regard to our opening budget presentation, so I wanted to just begin by providing the board and our community with an update with regard to our reopening. We, you may recall that we decided to go remote, instruction fully remote across the district for the week of January fourth. That proved, I think, to be the most prudent course of action for our schools. With the number of cases i- in the community and in all communities, this is not unique to Yorktown, but with the number of cases that we see manifesting themselves after holiday gatherings, opening our schools eleven days, on the eleventh day out from New Year's Eve gatherings is a, a smart decision. November sixteenth, Dr. Corsaro joined the board at their meeting and he shared that the vast majority of cases do present with symptoms within ten days, so does that mean that we won't have any shutdowns? Does that mean we won't have any COVID positive cases or contacts or instances of being in direct contact with someone who has the virus? Of course, that doesn't mean that, but it certainly assists us in the broader goal of keeping our schools open for in-person hybrid instruction. So, we did have a number of cases over the holiday recess, we had approximately twenty to twenty-five cases that showed the reason why I say twenty to twenty-five is there are some that are not confirmed yet as being lab positive. So, we have, um, we know of some individuals who have undergone testing, who are either awaiting results or on quarantining or, or just who have, they tested negative, but they, their doctor believes that they are uh, in fact, positive based on the symptomology and the fact pattern behind the case, so that's, that's why there's twenty to twenty-five, that's why there's a window there. Uh, the vaccination process, we're, we're really encouraged by the progress that the state has made and then uh, the, the region has made in bringing vaccines into the region. I do want to share with the board that, um, the school district under the direction of our medical director has come up with a, a program and a plan to be able to vaccinate anyone in our district, uh, employees, any district employees, contractors, people who, um, interface with our school district in, in a variety of capacities. Uh, we, we have come up with a vaccination program that we're looking at. My enormous thanks to Lisa Epstein for, uh, Lisa's a nurse at the middle school. Lisa has done just a remarkable job of coordinating vaccinations, our first tier, so you understand that the state has tiers within those tiers, the district has, uh, tiers, T-I-E-R. So, the first tier were our nurses, so all of our nurses have received their first dose of the vaccination. Then the next tier was, uh, additional health office staff, so the support staff within the health offices who are very, um, forward, public-facing and then student-facing and interact with students who come into the health office who may not be feeling well or symptomatic. So, the nurses have been vaccinated with their first dose, health, uh, dose, health office staff have also been given access to the first dose of the vaccine, most, uh, have accepted it. And then we moved on to many of our clinicians, psychologists, social workers, um, speech pathologists, OT, PT, uh, they have all received their first dose, tier one B from the state opened up today. So, uh, we are proceeding as quickly as we can to get vaccinations for, um, anyone who is an employee, a contractor or a, um, uh, in, in just different capacities, working and supporting our schools and leading our schools. We more to come on that, I know the supply is scarce, this will not be an immediate process, I think the governor's been very clear in the timetable that he has set forth, I'm a little more ambitious with our district and, and hoping that we can, um, do better on, on that time range, but again, much of it is out of our hands and we are literally working around the clock to make this happen for those who support our district. Mike, a question to that?
Just what has to happen, you know, on our end for this to, to occur? Is it, we're just waiting on an allocation of, of doses? Wha- what has to happen?
It, it's a few things, right? So, the first part of it is identifying partners who can assist us, medical professionals who can assist us in the vaccination and in vaccinating the staff. So, sure, individuals can go to their primary care physician, they can go to their own, um, doctor and obtain the vaccine, they can register on their own through the Department of Health website and certainly get the vaccine. That way, what we're trying to do is, um, make it a little more seamless and try to bring together partnerships with different medical entities to be able to provide the vaccine. Once you've identified those partnerships, then that organization has to get their supply of the vaccine. And that, right now, we've identified the partnerships, so we have some really, really good people who want to support our school district, some really talented medical professionals who are willing to assist. Um, and now they just need to receive their allocations of vaccinations and they will assist us as best they can, as best as their supplies will allow them to assist us. Uh, it will take some time, it certainly will take some time. We have approximately six hundred employees in the district, obviously all six hundred will not qualify for the vaccine for one reason or another. But those who do want access to the vaccine, we are working really hard to make that happen. I want to share a couple of pieces of good news, I, I, Mike, congratulations to, um, two of our students who were, uh, recognized by Regeneron Science, Science Talent Search, Neha Bhattacharya and Scott Whitman, just so proud of the research that they're doing, tremendous kudos to them, to their advisors and, uh, Mr. Rubio and Ms. Port Burke and to, to the entire school community, it's just a testament to all the good things that are happening in our school district. Also, um, Scott Whitman, it was recognized, uh, as a Scott, for a Scholar-Athlete Award, a really prominent Scholar-Athlete Award, the N-I triple A award, it's an essay campaign, it looks at the students' academic service, uh, extracurricular activities and, and they take that and they look at an essay that's submitted and Scott won in this round at the local, he'll move on to the regi- state and then the regional and then a national competition, we hope. Uh, it would just say, very talented person, somebody I'm so proud of and, uh, proud of all of our students. We had, uh, many students whose essays were certainly worthy of consideration who submitted for this award. And while they didn't get the recognition at the, uh, county level, they certainly have our recognition and our appreciation. With just moving forward, the gym project at the last Board of Education meeting, December twenty-first, we had discussed the renovations of the gymnasium at Yorktown High School through our capital reserve, I just wanna make clear that this is not through the general fund budget, this is through a separate, um, capital reserve fund that was established by the voters, approved by the voters. The projects were approved by the voters and the withdrawal of monies were approved by the voters and the board had a conversation in light of the uncertainty that the school district may experience with the budget shortfall, not just at the local level, but at the state level. We are anticipating a pretty substantial revenue shortfall, so the board did have a really good discussion about the the monies and, and how those monies can best be served and, um, there were some questions that were asked with regard to the borrowing of the money for other projects and, and our legal counsel weighed in and provided us some good information that I think is helpful and that will be helpful to the Board of Education. The monies from the capital reserve, according to the most recent executive order that was, that was issued in the state ed actually, S-E-D guidelines, is that those monies can be borrowed for COVID-related expenses, so we certainly have those. Um, will those carry into next year? I'm, I'm sure a portion of them, of those costs will carry into next year. The other part of the discussion is that we're saving, so we can borrow for those purposes, we do have to repay those monies back and we do have to repay those monies back with interest. So, it's a loan against ourselves, which essentially contradicts the purpose of creating the capital reserve fund. It's just a different, um, different per, per entity to which we're indebted. With regard to the monies there, we're already saving on the project, the project has come in about four hundred thousand dollars under budget. We've expended a couple hundred thousand dollars in soft costs at this point for the design, because you'll recall that this was approved a couple years ago. So, we are pretty far down the process, um, so I, I don't know if the board wants to continue to have a discussion, uh, we, we can have those items on the agenda for approval. We are getting close to the close of that forty-five day window from when the bids were open to be able to accept the bid awards and, and to take action, otherwise the bids would have to be dismissed and we would have to go through the bidding process once more and we don't know if we'll be able to repeat those savings as now the vaccine becomes more widespread and school districts, uh, start to mobilize again with their projects and the market becomes a little more competitive. So, we certainly bid in a very favorable climate for school districts and, uh, if we don't take that opportunity in this instance, I'm just not sure we can replicate those bid results. So, I share that with you, Jackie, I'm not sure, or Mike as head of fiscal, Jackie as head of steering, I'm not sure if there's anything that you wanted to add to the discussion.
Well, I just wanna be clear that this project, specifically this specific project, was approved by the voters two years ago. So, we've been working on it, it's, um, I know you spoke with our legal counsel who also recommended, am I correct, Ron, that we continue to go ahead with it, that we
Yes, our
voters vote from two years ago.
Our attorney, um, for, for several reasons, uh, shared and recommended moving forward with the project for some of the reasons I mentioned and then for some of the reasons that were mentioned at the December twenty-first meeting with regard to the budgetary shortfall that's created in subsequent school years. So, we plug the hole with these monies and then we find ourselves in a even more challenging circumstance in the following school year with an even wider budget gap at that point, except now without the resources to fill that gap.
Correct. Uh, I, Mike, do you have anything to add?
No, not really, I mean, we had questions, we had a good discussion at the last meeting, we had some questions, they've been answered. And right now, based on where we are in the process and the, uh, situation that we find ourselves in, I think it makes sense to move forward with, with the project as outlined. And, um, you know, we'll revisit the rest of the capital reserve fund at, at another date.
Okay. Alright.
That, that concludes the first, just the general update portion of my update for the board, we're, we're continuing to to do some good work in the district, we'll continue to, um, share some of the good things that are happening. We, I had a conversation with Mr. DeGennaro today about, believe it or not, now that we're starting into the second half of the year, the, the second half of the year celebrations for our class of two thousand and twenty-one and how do we do that safely? How do we do that intelligently? How do we do that in a memorable way for our students? So, those conversations have already begun and I just, uh, it's hard to believe that we're at the point where we're starting to talk about, okay, well, how does prom look? How does graduation look? How does this event look? How do, uh, spring sports look and, and winter sport season two? How, how do all those things look? Uh, it, it literally feels like fifteen years ago, but it also feels like fifteen minutes ago that we were planning for the reopening of schools. So, with that said, um, if it's okay, I'd, I'd like to move into just the budget overview presentation for the coming school year. It will look similar, it will look similar, um, to what you have seen in some years, however, the narrative continues to evolve, especially in a COVID environment, so, uh, you bet you can advance the next slide. And the first thing you'll notice on this next slide is the title of that vision has to change. I recall Mrs. O'Shea and Mr. Cole and I visiting with, with each of the faculties before COVID took hold. So, uh, Lisa Tom, I think it was January, February, we met with all of the faculties individually and we went through the work of the vision and I still have the documentation and then we were upended by COVID and, and everything has turned into, uh, managing the situation since that point. So, we're going to be returning to this, but the first thing that has to change is although it's a clever connection to two thousand and twenty vision, a clarity of vision and, and perfect vision, we need to have that vision reflect the environment that we're in. So, we've begun those conversations with our faculty and staff, we'll continue the conversations and, and part of the conversations and the work that we've done with our faculty and staff is to really look at the vision and number one, ask, what are we doing that we ought to be, continue doing? What are we not doing that should be reflected in this vision? And looking at the choice of words to determine, is this still where we're headed? And we're several years now into our journey, we're several years into our ESTEAM journey. Uh, so more to come on that, that, that is a board presentation in and of itself, is, is speaking about the vision and, and some changes for the vision. But I did want to stay true to that because the vision is, continues to guide us. You bet you can go to the next slide, you've seen this slide before, I didn't have the heart to change the picture to, because any picture that I would take now has children in masks. And while we encourage the masks, I don't want that to be in the archival record of the presentations that I've given to this board. Uh, we're going to get through this, we're going to come to a day where we don't need masks anymore and I didn't want there to be a lasting memory of the mask, so any presentation that I give you going forward will not have the children in masks, I will find pictures of the students without masks on, so, um, but the spirit of the slide is that we educate the whole child, this has been our way, this will continue to be our way and we continue to demonstrate this belief through our budget. We allocate resources to each of these areas. In fact, in February, uh, the board will be getting a presentation, that will be delivering a presentation on the social emotional work that we're doing with our psychologists and social workers. We're going to, um, provide the board with an update because especially now, especially now connecting with the social emotional wellness of a student is so important. So, we'll share some information on that, you bet you can go to the next slide. I, I just wanna talk a minute about our ESTEAM approach. In two thousand and seventeen, this was just a concept we were developing, we talked about, gee, how do we really tie our vision together and how do we bring it all together? And, and we came up with this ESTEAM acronym and an empathy-based approach to STEAM and our team talked about the vision and what does it mean and our faculty and staff have been remarkable in buying into this vision. I, I shared it with the community last June, but I'll share it again with the community. And certainly the board is aware of this, ESTEAM is now a nationally recognized award-winning program. Character.org has selected ESTEAM as a two thousand and twenty promising practice in education and that is a national recognition. It's the same organization that awards the National School District of Character, National Schools of Character, New York State Schools of Character. So, ESTEAM as, as a, as an approach and as a philosophy to teaching has now been recognized nationally, which is just a tremendous tribute to the faculty and staff, it's a tremendous tribute to our students and the flexibility that they've demonstrated with this new concept. I, I am grateful to our administrators, both at the building and district level and certainly to the board. This new concept and the board was so supportive and we've allocated resources and we've invested and I'll share a little bit more about that. Uh, but we've made investments and we're gonna continue to make investments and, uh, they, we've continued to propel our instructional program forward. You bet you can go to the next slide. So, you, I think our community is well aware, um, of, but I, but I say this because we have, I repeat a lot of the things because we have a new cohort of parents who are joining our school district each year. So, for those who are new to our school district, whether your first child's in kindergarten or you've moved to our district newly, we have such a robust program of athletics and co-curricular activities. There is something for everyone in our high school, we have so many clubs at our middle school as well. So, for those who may not be as familiar with all that the district has to offer, there are just so many wonderful opportunities for students and if we don't have it, bring it to the principal and we can create it. We have wonderful levels of sports, our fine and performing arts are second to none, if anyone saw, first of all, Clue was amazing, our November, uh, presentation of Clue was just out of this world, I'm so proud of our students. When you think about what our students were able to do in such a challenging environment, y- you just look at it and say, oh my gosh, I cannot believe these are high school students, some of the most talented children are right in our high school. And I, I say that literally and figuratively, some are learning remotely in the high school, but they're, they're in our high school. With the band, if you saw the winter concert, it was just out of this world, we have dance company coming up, so for, um, anyone who maybe does not have a student at the high school level who is viewing this presentation, we'll post that link to our website, it's a wonderful event, we're going to have the students dancing on stage, of course, in masks, twelve feet apart, but I really do encourage everyone to participate in, in that and then we'll certainly have our spring performance on the stage, so our Fine and Performing Arts Program, even in this most challenging time for the Fine and Performing Arts is thriving. You bet you can go to the next slide. The service opportunities are remarkable, I will be sharing with, uh, the community a wonderful initiative that our social workers are leading and I believe we'll be partnering with one of our student clubs, I don't wanna share that, uh, which club yet because I, I just wanna be sure that they're aware that we're going to be, um, moving through our student clubs with a wonderful, um, mobile food pantry, where students and families can come to our campuses after school hours, um, open their trunks. We're working with Feeding Westchester and we can drop two bags of, of food into their trunks and this is something that I'm really excited about, uh, something I'm passionate about. And I look forward to the work, so when you talk about service opportunities, these are really, really meaningful opportunities and they impact the community that we live in. So, I, I'm just so proud of the work that our social workers are doing, I'm so proud of the work that our students are doing. This is really, really meaningful and inspiring work, so this mobile food pantry, more to come, there will be a, uh, pop-up on our website in the coming weeks as we get that program started, but really, really exciting. And then certainly academically, our graduation rate is just tops in the region, one of the tops in the region. Our students are going to really good schools, really selective schools and they're going to serve their country and they're going into the workforce and they're finding their way and they're finding their voice and they're advocating for themselves, even more important than anything else is they're, they're finding their own way and they're advocating for themselves and I'm so proud that our schools have been able to give our students that, that launching pad to be able to spring forward after they leave our high school. I bet you can go to the next slide. I've shared this again, um, I, I won't read the slide, but there's some really good things that are happening in our school district, sometimes with every correspondence going out lately being about COVID, uh, we may lose sight of all of the wonderful things that are happening, all of the wonderful recognitions that our students and faculty and staff are receiving. These are really, really good things that are happening in our school district and, and I just wanted to bubble them up and I'll give you the pictorial version of this, you bet you can go to the next slide. That we've been recognized by so many different agencies, I, I sent out my November newsletter a picture of our blue ribbon flag hanging proudly in front of our high school. There are some really wonderful things that are happening and although many of the communications these days are with regard to health and safety, please know that we haven't lost sight, uh, of all of the true important work that we're doing. And I'm not saying that the, um, health and safety component's not truly important, but we are focusing on the academics, where our teachers are doing a remarkable job, we're seeing good things happening, we're seeing good results in our classrooms, we're seeing our baseline assessments come in where we expect them to be, uh, in, in a, in general. So, good things are happening, we're continuing to look for more innovative opportunities to provide to our students, we're not losing sight of that. And, um, we're continuing to support the social emotional wellness of our students. You bet you can go to the next slide. So, this past school year is unlike anything anyone has ever experienced, I don't think there, I, I can tell you, I in, in all of my graduate work, there was never a course on leading a district through a pandemic or managing a school district through a pandemic. Um, but I think they may actually add that to the course requirements for graduate students moving forward who are looking to get an admin degree. Um, so educating through the pandemic, it has been a new normal, when you're teaching students at home and teaching students here and, and I don't get to see the students every day, we get to see them every other day, it's such a challenge and it's so different and it's a challenge for everyone. It's, it's challenging for the students, it's challenging for the parents at home, it's challenging for the teachers in the classroom. It, it's just a new normal, the new components to the instructional day, we, we wanna get to the same endpoints, but we have to build in hand washing breaks and we have to build in sanitizing breaks and wash hands before you go to lunch and after lunch and after the playground. There are just some new components to the instructional day that make the day feel so much denser and our teachers are doing just a miraculous job, nothing short of amazing. And the new components are really creating a dense rest of the instructional day. And there's an enhanced focus on mental health, I have been in more meetings with our clinical staff this year than I have in any other year and I would argue in any year combined, in any of the first three years here combined, I've been in more meetings. I don't know if it's a testament to how many meetings I've been in this year or how few prior, I think it's more the former. We have met continuously to talk about the social emotional needs of our students and the mental health of our students because we recognize this is not easy and, in fact, this is difficult for children, trying to navigate learning from home and learning in school and, and the new friend group dynamics because you're not in school every day and, and the lunches and the social situations have been reduced. And all the kids want is to just come back to school, that's all they want, they just wanna be able to go to school, they just wanna be here every day. I don't even think they care at this point if they wear a mask, they just wanna be in school. So, we're working toward that, that's part of the push with the vaccines and, and with everything that, um, our district is doing that I referenced before, but there has just been such an intense focus on mental health and we, and the board, thank you to the board, you, you authorized the addition of another clinician at the high school which was so sorely needed. And, and it may not have been as needed in previous years, but it was really needed this year and, and I really appreciate the board's support in helping us to meet the needs of our students. Budgetary implications, PPE is just such a high cost, we're, we've outfitted now that N-ninety-five masks have become more widely and readily available, we have outfitted our health office staff with N-ninety-five masks, we're looking to expand that N-ninety-five mask offering, provided that the, um, hospitals can get the equipment first. Disinfecting, the, all of those costs really add up, staffing, there's more staffing in a hybrid model, there's no question that a hybrid and a remote model is more expensive for a school district to implement because if I'm in a classroom at the elementary level teaching my students, well, we want to engage the students who are at home to the greatest extent that we can, well, that involves staff and, and the district has made investments in staffing and then certainly the technology investments. We have loaned out, I, I wanna say we're over two thousand Chromebooks at this point. Uh I want to say we're over two thousand Chromebooks at this point, certainly more, more than that. We've loaned out a lot of Chromebooks, wireless uh hotspots, the wireless internet um devices. The document cameras, the sound amplification devices. So that uh with a mask you can still hear what's being said. We have made uh upgrades to our bandwidth and some of the infrastructure to accommodate the traffic that's going out. Those all come with a cost. Those were all we. We anticipated many of those costs to a large extent. Tom and his department are the best in the business. I say this at every meeting. And I will say this at every one of the budget meetings. Tom's the best there is when it comes to uh managing a budget and there's no secret about it. It's, we expected many of these. But there were many things that just arose. There were many expenses that, that just arose that, that um it would be hard to prepare for. For example, a cyber attack that happened on our, on our uh infrastructure. It's hard to expect that that's going to happen. So those were some costs that took place. Some of the staffing needs that arose during the course of the year. Were, were also some things that you try to forecast, but I, I don't think it's possible to forecast every single situation that will arise. Yvette, you can go to the next slide. Over the last three years, we've been on a journey to add more courses and more course offerings to. Our district. We've really tried hard to be able to build into our program. So both within the program and without. With regard to the clubs and the co-curricular clubs, we do have our robotics team that is terrific. We have our first Lego league and trying to bring that down as well. Um but we've also included courses on, in our instructional program. So our AP psychology team and Husker discovery courses, those are now in year three. We have the engineering course, the app development course in their second year. And then we put in the second component of uh engineering for this school year. So we continue to expand on the offerings that we have. And we're looking forward to investigating some additional opportunities for our student, maybe within the program, maybe without. We'll be talking to um the board about some of the ideas that we have uh at an upcoming meeting. I think as early as this month, later this month, we're going to be talking to the board about some of the things that. We're considering to continue to move our instructional program forward because that's important for us is we need to continue to move our instructional program forward. Um so those are, I, I didn't want to lose sight of some of the new courses. We think about in our minds as we talk to engineering, of course, it's engineering. And, and I don't want to lose sight of the fact that engineering is only two years old in Yorktown and we're still growing the program and we're still increasing. And, and my thanks to obviously Mrs. O'Shea, the high school administration for their leadership in making this happen. The teachers for stepping up to teach these new courses. So under Lisa's leadership, it's been absolutely tremendous to add some uh. In my opinion, really important courses to our high school program and we're going to continue to do that. Uh Yvette, you go to the next slide. I'm going to go quickly through these because I don't have the information at this point. And such as I don't have the information, we don't have the information. Many of these numbers have not been released yet. Uh so for example, the tax, Yvette, you go to the next slide. The tax uh levy growth rate that, we don't know that at this point. So you've seen the form, you've gone through the form, you've approved it each year. We, we just don't know it at this point. So once we know that, obviously, we will share that. Um Tom, when are we expecting to have that number? Is it correct that we're probably about two months out or a month and a half?
This particular number, we should have within the next couple of weeks.
Perfect, even better. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll know what that calculation is. That would be terrific. Obviously, that drives a lot of the conversation that we're going to have. Yvette, you go to the next slide. Enrollment drives everything. There was an article recently in the Yorktown News newspaper. That spoke about the Soundview prep site being um repurposed and, and some residential, some mixed use there. So we're, enrollment drives many of the decisions, if not most of the decisions that we make. And primarily it drives the staffing decisions that we make, which is the biggest component of our budget. So the new housing developments, uh those while the conversation has quieted. I'm not quite sure that they have gone away on the housing developments. But, but now there are other conversations that are emerging and we'll continue to monitor those. But Dr. Saversky's study from two years ago continues to guide us and it continues to be such a valuable resource. And it was very helpful for us to understand why um we were so strapped for space this year. When we had to space our students out, desks six feet apart. Well, if we went back to Dr. Saversky's study, we would see that our buildings were at ninety percent usage already before the pandemic. So when your buildings are that far used. It's difficult to just manufacture new space within a building that's already up to a ninety percent room utilization rate. You bet you can go to the next. Um Tom, on pension costs, where are we with that? Staffing, I'm sorry, staffing. I'm getting ahead of myself because I'm really excited to talk about pension costs and uh health insurance costs. Those are the uh. More interesting conversations. The staffing levels are always, and I mentioned this. The, the new piece of information is we have about seventeen teacher retirements to date. There, there has been an influx in teacher retirements at this point. Um part of it is just a function of the, the teachers that we have and the experience levels that we have. And part of it is a function of the challenge in teaching in a pandemic. I, I don't think that's something we can overlook. So we certainly understand that. One piece with staffing that is unknown at this point is remote learning and remote model of instruction. I don't know if. The remote learning model is something that will continue beyond this year. Will we be required to continue it? I'd love to just get our students back. I, I think everyone knows I've, I've been very public about. Me wanting to get our students back to school and get everyone back to school. And let's let our children be children again safely, of course, safely, responsibly. And following all the uh parameters that are in place by the Department of Health and our medical director. But I don't know what the future at the state level will be for a remote model of instruction. Obviously, that will impact our staffing. I don't know if we will have an answer to that by the time this budget season concludes. So it's just something that has to be a part of our calculus as we plan for staffing. You bet you can go to the next slide. So pension costs, Tom, when are we uh anticipating getting this number?
We'd expect the final number uh sometime in February, early February.
So we're about a month or so away from that. And again, when you add this cost to the tax levy qua- uh cap. The budget numbers start to come into perspective and, and everything starts the, to piece together. Sometimes they don't piece together very nicely, but they, they start to piece together. Um so that we can better understand the situation that we're looking at with regard to a uh tax rate increase. You've got the next slide. Health insurance, we anticipate the premiums are going to go up about three percent. That's where they had been going up in recent years. So that's where we anticipate they will be. We. We have um seen obviously how important the health insurance component is, especially in a pandemic. Um I now actually sit on the board of the Health Insurance Consortium, so I sit on the joint governance and the financial uh finance committee. Of the PNW Health Insurance Consortium and then Tom participates as well. And uh it's, it's interesting to see how the process unfolds when these rate increases are determined. And then how much thought and effort and consideration is invested in, in this increase. So it's one bullet on our slide. It, it's weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks of worth, work. Sitting on that board of, of the insurance consortium to come to that number. You bet you can go to the next slide. So our cash reserves are healthy. Um those are the reserves that we have, the capital reserve, that third bullet on the bottom is what we discussed this evening. That fund is separate from the general fund. These reserves are separate from the general fund. The capital reserve is separate from the general fund. And, and um withdrawals made and, and the expenses that we make do not come from the cap. Come from the general fund. They'll come from the capital reserve fund for that gym project. So I just want to be very clear on that, that these are completely separated. From the capital reserve and the general operating budget. You've got the next slide. So state aid is still pending. We know reductions are coming. Actually, I can't say we know reductions are coming. We have been told and we've been advised uh that reductions are coming upwards of ten percent. Um so we'll know more in the spring. And of course, one of the most frustrating pieces of this is even once we get our projected numbers. It's still a subject to change during the school year. So that's something that we're kind of facing this year. You got the next uh slide is a budget development process. So these are some important dates. Just want the community to be aware. I know the board is aware of the process and all the work that goes into preparing the budget and preparing the presentations that come to. Uh the board and to the community. We begin this process in, in, in truth, we begin then in October in earnest. We begin in November. Tom's team, I don't, I don't think ever stops. I, I think they're just going around this entire year working through this. And there are a series of presentations. Actually, Yvette, on the next slide, we can show everyone. The budget presentations that we're making. This is a list of all the budget presentations. When you go onto our website for the uh community viewing this presentation, you'll see that the dates are in blue. They're in blue because they're hyperlinks to the actual presentation that's being made. So when you go onto our website and you see the presentation schedule, if you actually click on January eleventh. It, it will take you to this presentation. And then each sub, so obviously, please don't click on anything ahead of today's date because it won't be posted at that point. So anybody who wants to get ahead of the reading for class the uh next day won't be able to do so. So the board will be the first group to uh receive the presentations. And the day following the board presentation is when the uh, the presentations will be posted to our website. So Yvette, the next slide, uh just next steps, the next steps don't change. We're going to continue to monitor the numbers that come in. We're going to look at the staff and program needs. And obviously, we're going to look to balance. The budget sensitivity to our taxpayer. And high quality opportunities for our students. But I think that's the work of every budget cycle. I don't think that will ever change. It's a sensitivity to the taxpayer while providing our students with high quality education opportunities. Now, on the next slide, I, I can't necessarily tell you that this is true. So I can tell you that May eighteenth is the day of the budget vote. However, because that's the third Tuesday in May and that's when the budget votes are scheduled every year. Historically, we have had a voting location at Mohansick Elementary School. The executive order for the voting in school budget and trustee elections. Has not been extended at this point to a mail-in. Um vote by mail platform that we had for the past spring in light of the COVID pandemic. So at this point, this information is accurate. However, please know it is subject to change. Should the governor determine that a mail-in ballot system would be uh. Required for school districts to um, to use in their elections. So while I'm telling you now that the vote is in person, I, I think everyone would, would agree that there's a possibility. Um some may say there's a probability that the governor will extend mail-in voting to the spring for, for school budget trustee elections. I just wanted to provide you the facts first and then give you some context and commentary around that. So this too is evolving. In addition to all the numbers, how we vote is, is still evolving as well. And once we know more, we'll obviously share that. That concludes the budget presentation that I have. Um I appreciate the time. I appreciate your patience. I know I went a little longer than I normally would have gone, but I just thought that. Um some of the slides required a little more discussion.
Thank you. Um but I think because in your update, you talked about the capital reserve project update. I don't know if we really need to do that again, right? Did you already mention it? So we can.
We did. I, I wasn't sure if there was anything that the board wanted to add or, or further discussion. But um the, the advice of legal counsel, I'll, I'll, I'll share that with you. The advice of legal counsel. Was to move forward with the capital reserve project and, and it was advice for, from a few. Different perspectives, uh most notably from a budgetary and a fiscal um responsibility.
Okay, all right. Then we can uh, we'll move on to policy. And I have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following prop, policies. We have fifty-three thirty searches and interrogations. Fifty-four twenty uh student health services and eighty-four fourteen point six vehicle idling. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Personnel upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion at the following. The approved under certified personnel, we have appointments, part-time appointments. We have our coaches and co-curriculars. Unpaid leave of absence, a revised leave of absence, uh resignations for retirement, regular resignations. Under classified personnel, we have appointments for civil service, permanent appointments, addition to the substitute list and another retirement.
A move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Um business office resolved from recommendation of the superintendent. Um the board hereby authorizes the board president executive, execute contracts for health and welfare services provided to students who reside in other districts. But are attending non-public schools in the Yorktown Central School District for the twenty-twenty-one school year.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to establish a twenty-twenty-one per pupil rate of one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-six cents. For health and welfare services to non-resident pupils attending non-public schools within the Sen- Yorktown Central School District.
A move.
All those in favor? Bit awards, whereas the Board of Education, in accordance with Article five A of the General Municipal Law. Has invited sealed bids for the furnishing of material and labor necessary for the summer of twenty-twenty-one district-wide improvement projects. Which bids were open publicly on December second, two thousand and twenty. Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby determines based upon the analysis of the bids and recommendations of KSQ and ACCI. That the following bidders are the lowest responsible bidders for the portions of the projects identified herein. One Jennings and Company of Harrison will be awarded the general work contract for a base bid amount of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. An alternate A-one four motorized gym curtain dividers at forty-two thousand dollars. Alternate to, two gym padding at twenty thousand dollars. An alternate three exterior site work drainage and concession areas of a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. For total contract of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Um ACS Systems Associates of Mount Vernon will be awarded the mechanical HVAC contract for the base bid amount of nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And an alt one of um enhanced filtration on the RTUs for eight thousand dollars for a total contract price of. Nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. And AG Electric of Mount Kisco be awarded the electrical contracts for the base bid amount of two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And an alternate A-one four motorized gym curtain dividers for eight thousand dollars for total contract price of two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
O and M vendors, be it resolved that upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Yorktown Board of Education hereby empowers the board president. Enter into a, an agreement with Nickerson Corporation for the uh Yorktown High School Gymnasium Telescopic Bleacher Replacement. disposal of existing and furnishing of athletic folding chairs, educational data services, bid number ninety-seven sixty-seven. Entitled New York Island Cooperative MSRP Furniture for a total not to exceed two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And be it resolved that upon recommendation of superintendent, the board president is hereby empowered. The board, hereby empowers the board president to enter into an agreement with Clayton. And then my computer just went dead. Hang on. Um for the addition of forty-eight foot section of aluminum bleachers with an ADA ramp stair and platform of Sourcewell Contract. Oh nine one seven one nine DCT for total not to exceed seventy thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars.
So move.
Second.
Discussion, Tom, can you just explain why these are outside of the contract, please?
Where we participate in a series of purchasing cooperatives um as a normal course of business. Now, these items, even though they're in the, uh the capital projects. Now, these items, even though they're in the uh the capital projects, allow us to not have to go out to bid because of the size of the contracts in each case. So we went right to two of our existing cooperatives, found the uh materials that we needed and were able to secure them uh very quickly into the best available price.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those budget transfer, a motion to approve the budget transfers listed below.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Special Ed, a motion to arrange the following placements as of January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one.
A move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those gets grants and donations, Yorktown Central School District, five thou- five hundred dollars from Jackie Carbone for the Yorktown Central School District to help that meet the needs of our families in our community.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're up to board comment. Mike?
No, I'm good.
Freshmeat?
I'm good, thanks.
Lisa?
I'm good, thank you.
Anthony?
Happy New Year to everybody. And who's up this year? Do we know? Who's up this year?
I think it's me and Pete.
You and Pete. Okay, well, Happy New Year, everyone. Have a great year.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thank you.
I'm good. Ron, Lisa, Tom? Um Yvette, did anybody sign up for a public comment for the second half?
No, they did not, no.
Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.